Hello.
I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting to order, please. Um, roll call, please.
Megan, that's in the room.
Here.
Michelle, that's in.
Here.
Kate McKinney.
Here.
Nathaniel Olson.
Present.
Dan Olson.
Here.
Marsha Turner.
Here.
And Hall Johnson.
Here.
All right. And moving on to item C, approval of the agenda. I would like a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Aye, so move. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. And we're going to move on to item two, presentations for this evening. Um, item A is student-staff-community recognition.
All right, uh, Josie McShane come forward, please. I asked that Mr. Hopkey come forward as well.
Josie McShane?
Not here? All right. Kate Nordback come forward along with Ms. Geese Regan.
All right, thank you very much.
Sarah Hamilton, front and center, please, along with Mr. Schurz.
School District Recognition of Excellence is awarded Sarah Hamilton on this first day of February 2021. The school board and the administration of the School District recognize you for your outstanding work in health offices, particularly at the Junior High School. You have maintained a calm environment during trying times and have done well upon and beyond to assist our staff and students. You have excellent communication with high school office staff and that's allowed our procedures to carry out. But if it's celebrated, you are a valued member of the school and community and we applaud you to have you represent our school. Thank you for all that.
All right. It was very exciting to have three of our staff members recognized this evening. That's great. Um, we appreciate all that you do. Um, we're going to move on to item B, uh, the referendum project update. Brad Kunkel is here from CSATEN.
Good evening. It's, uh, it's certainly been a busy past month for us and the next month is going to be just about as busy. We finalized our construction documents, uh, reached out to contractors based off a list discussed with the district. Uh, CS posted notifications to the local paper as well as a builders exchange. Uh, contractors have largely shown a lot of interest in bidding the project, which is really good news. A lot have reached out. Though it was an invite list as, as part of a school project, it's also a public project and we're getting a lot of contractors reaching out, uh, per the builders exchange, so good to see that. Contractor walkthroughs are going to begin, uh, with two starting this Wednesday and there'll be additional two walkthroughs next Wednesday. Uh, bids are going to be due March 2nd and CS will present recommendations for awarding bids to the board on March 8th. Uh, we'll be hoping the board approves, uh, awarding bids on March 15th at the regular scheduled board meeting. Uh, there's a few scope items that aren't addressed in the bid packages, but we'll largely be looking at awarding the vast majority of remaining work, uh, this May, or, uh, March, I apologize. And that's largely where we're at right now, but do want to let you know, um, with some of the work that took place this summer at the high school and middle school, uh, the district has been awarded incentives for folks on energy, so those are approved.
Awesome.
Somewhat brief, but, uh, any questions for me?
Any questions, anyone? Okay, no.
All right, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will, um, receive and place that on file. And we're moving on to item C, update from the district nurse, Sarah Hamilton. Anybody have any, um, get, we're able to read through the information that Mrs. Hamilton provided for us? Is there any questions for Mrs. Hamilton?
Can I, I do have one question.
Okay.
Are these, um, were this total positive cases or is this total cases that are exclusion?
Um, I think you'd be better to answer those questions than I would, so thank you.
Oh, you have questions for me. Um, what, what was your question about cases?
The question, is this the number, the total positive cases or the number of cases excluded for whatever reason?
So, the currently excluded or the total positive cases? Which number are you looking at?
I'm looking at this top box, whatever is that top box right there?
That's the total number of positive cases this year, today.
Okay, got you, thank you.
Yep.
And currently?
And currently, how many positive cases do we have? Like, how many students do we have who are excluded because they're positive?
Yeah.
Um, at this point, act, well, the total exclusions is 42 and students who would still be excluded because they are positive, they should all be back to school as of tomorrow, any students who had tested positive. I think we're looking better.
Yeah.
That's really good.
And, and, and staff, is that, is that?
There's no current positive staff cases.
And tomorrow would be a hundred percent?
Well, the, the, there-
Besides exclusions?
Could be staff excluded yet. There would be staff excluded yet if they were like in close contact to a positive symptomatic getting tested, so our numbers are looking better. I could, if you wanted your next board meeting, have like a current number of positive cases. Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mrs. Hamilton? Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, we will receive and place that information on file as well. All right, moving on to item D, the achievement gap reduction mid-year update. Mr. Hopkey. Oh, and staff. Good evening, ladies.
So Pete Hopkey, uh, elementary principal, you've got Kristi Alt, second grade teacher, and Chandra Stafford, fourth grade teacher. Just want to kind of reorient everyone. So the, I know this is kind of a- So the first slide is just a kind of reminder of what the AGR is or the Achievement Gap Reduction Program is. It's a five-year grant, uh, that was renewed this past summer. And so the objective is to increase performance of our low economic or disadvantaged students in comparison to the rest of our students.
And so then we're on the beginning of a new five-year plan, is that correct?
That's correct, absolutely.
Thank you.
So getting into this year, uh, what we really wanted to look at was the focus of fluency for both reading and math. What we were seeing last year is we were, we were having students that were struggling with that fluency component. And, and then we closed on March 16th and we really had a hard time impacting fluency for students from that point until we reconvened back in September. Um, so truly what we wanted to focus on is building that fluency skills with both math and reading and knowing that it's a fundamental skill for, for all students. Okay? So getting into, uh, some of our data, uh, taking a look at kindergarten. I know part, part of our focus and when we talked was really digging into blending and building those CVC, uh, word building skills. Um, I know that, uh, we've, the team has really been working on the onset sounds, rhyming and blending and really focusing on that year-round as well as incorporating some of the sight words, uh, that we've, that kids need for that fluency piece, which will be later on. Yes, sir.
What is a CVC word, please?
So a CVC word is, it's a consonant-vowel consonant like cat, bat, rat, so yes, I'm doing the rhyming as well, so. Right, so it's hitting it all, all right?
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. And then getting into first, so we did see some growth there, which is good, continuing on that path and, like I said, incorporating more of the sight words, which is going to, uh, help bolster not, not only their scores, but then scores later on for first grade, which is their focus as we take a look at our first grade. Looking at sight words, making sure they're, they're increasing their fluency of sight words. Um, I know we had a slight dip and what happened there is, uh, what we saw is there were a number of students, our lower students, that were struggling with word segmenting, so the team really focused on that, that intervention with some of our, uh, lower students, saw great growth. And, and the drop that we saw here is actually our lower students, our high, some of our high-risk students went up, but some of our high, our low-risk went down, so our middle, our middle ground actually gained. Um, I know we're switching gears here a little bit and really hitting heavy on, on that sight word, uh, interventions as we move into our second semester here. Okay? All right. Next up, we've got second grade. And, and, uh, taking a look at second grade, um, seeing great growth when we're focusing on, uh, the A reading. Yeah, it's, uh, part of the test for the Fast Bridge where it's, it's looking at introductory or introduction words. Um, it's looking at encoding and it's looking at, um, at the vocabulary. And what we're seeing is really good growth. I know the team is really focused on, uh, doing guided reading daily with all of our kids. Uh, and looking at the overall information here, yeah, we saw a slight dip in, in some of the areas here, uh, but their auto reading scores have increased and I know they're going to be looking at going into some comprehension skills as well. Okay? All right, taking a look at third grade. Uh, their focus, again, going to be very much the same thing with that A reading, it's at, uh, phonics and fluency. They had a slight lag in their, uh, scores and some of that is, um, the testing piece as well as we, we had an interchange of students in third grade, which was kind of interesting. We lost some students that were performing pretty well and then we had some that came in that were not performing well. So it, it kind of altered some of our scores and then, um, I think overall they did see an increase in their vocab, uh, performance, uh, with this testing. But with the identification and, and the encoding, saw a slight lag there. Okay?
I have a question, Mr. Hop- can you, can you explain to us a little bit more about this graph here?
Yeah.
So your baseline, ninety percent of the students were at the benchmark and in January, thirty-nine, so are you saying that this bottom below part, is that what you're, is that what you're at now or what you're driving to be at?
The, the winter scores is what truly, uh, that's where we're at right now.
Okay.
Okay, and our objective is to get to that eighty percent of our students, because right now what we have is, um, fifty-four percent of our students are at that benchmark or at proficiency.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. Getting into fourth grade, this one is kind of a, a tricky one and I know, um, Chandra can help me speak to this a little more too. With fourth grade, what we did is, is, um, we focused in on a specific test, which is auto reading. And what it is, it's, it's six, or six-second passages that they have to read and, and answer, um, questions with it. And what we saw is we kind of had a, a lag from that fifty-five percent to thirty-eight percent, but some of it was, was student error, but we, we had a glitch with, uh, the system. It was our first year of implementing the test, uh, through grades two through four and, and we just saw a few problems and I, if you want to speak to that a little more.
So like he said, with this test, our focus here, um, was on just one part of the test versus our whole A reading test. If we were to put the A reading, our scores, our kids are going up in reading overall, but with the, just the fluency part of it, I know it was tricky when the kids were taking the test. Like I said, this is brand new for them, plus it was brand new for us because we hadn't taken the fast test. Um, but when they had to go press things on their laptops and their computers, a lot of them like, I don't know how to do this or it's going too fast. And it, like, that really came into play, I think, with a lot of the kids, so I think the data got really skewed from that point of it, from what we see in the classroom. So that was a big thing for us too.
Okay, so do you have a plan for, for fixing that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And we'll, I've got it at the end where we-
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Okay, all right. So now if we can switch gears, we'll switch over to math here. And I, I think with math, it's much more straightforward as far as the fluency is concerned, because we've got a lot of time stuff, um, that we're going through. With kindergarten, what we're looking at is, is for them to truly identify thirty-two or more numbers in one minute, so it's, it's speeding them through, uh, that. And with, with that time off that we had, well, I shouldn't say time off, but the time of not having them in person from March till September, we just saw that students weren't, weren't coming in with a lot of good, uh, skills. So, uh, really working on that before and after concept, the numbers before and the numbers after, so getting some of that sequencing in and, and really working on not only, uh, different activities and games and whatnot to, to cement that concept of, of numbers, but then also writing their numbers, so it's, it's taking the aesthetic approach as well. And we're seeing, we're seeing some growth and, and still continuing to work on that more. Okay? With first grade, um, what we were looking at is, is, again, with that number sequencing, looking at how the numbers are arranged and, and understanding, uh, the general value. So if, if you have ten, ten is, can be like nine and one and, and eight and two, so it's, it's really building that concept, um, with relationships and really taking a look at decomposing numbers, like I was just doing from ten to eight to two, um, and then also combining. Uh, what they've been working on is, is getting some of their initial sprints in, uh, which is you have a timed, uh, event, one minute, where kids are going through and they're doing some of the, the basic addition and seeing how many they can get correct in, in, in that minute. And then reviewing and going through that stuff with students. Okay? Overall, I think, uh, the, the sequence is doing great. Um, I know as far as their overall performance, had a, had a slight lag with some of the decomposing of numbers, but I know they're really hitting it hard now and, uh, I've had the, the great pleasure of working with a few first graders quite a bit lately, so anyway, so I'm learning that skill. Anyway. Moving on. So a second grade, uh, this is getting into, when we're talking about audit, automaticity, it is, it's a, uh, a timed event here with the CBM. And CBM is curriculum-based measures and it, it's truly looking at, uh, measuring where students are based on that grade level skill. Started off with forty-two percent, went to fifty-one percent, saw some good growth there. I don't know if you want to add anything to the math.
I would just say again, this is the-
Please, thank you.
I would just say again that this is the first year with us using FAST as the assessment and so we've had kind of a little bit of a learning curve as far as, you know, teachers and students, them getting used to it being a timed event, especially in the fall, even at the mid-year, it, they just aren't used to the test yet. So I would anticipate that as these kids, you know, take this test year after year, that hopefully we'll see them grow. They'll get used to it and it won't be that like anxiousness that we've been seeing. Even something as simple as using the left, you know, side of the mouse to click the answer, which sounds kind of silly to adults, but to a seven-year-old, it's like, you know, we, we found that we had to teach kids how to use the mouse the right way, so that hopefully. We're working on it, we're working through all those things, so.
Great, thank you.
All right. Moving on to third grade, uh, very much the same test, uh, but, uh, the third grade level here. What, what we're noticing here with, with that growth, that they spent a lot of time working on the fluency of both addition and subtraction, so a second grade level, uh, uh, standards as well as their multiplication. So it's really building that, uh, base in during their win times and, and focusing on building those skills. All right? And then fourth grade, uh, likewise getting some of that growth in here. Um, I know performance-wise, uh, they had a negligible increase, um, and that's, that's something we'll take a look at as well, getting into it some. Okay, perfect. So the last one is, is really taking a look at what were some of the challenges that we faced. And I, I know that when, when we developed the, the Rails reopening, uh, one thing that we decided to take or, or to do was to make sure that each classroom was its own cohort. Previously, what we would have, uh, in, in other years is our win time, we would separate kids according to skill levels into the different classrooms, so it was more targeted for larger groups. With a cohort, we can't do that, so we're keeping them in the classroom themselves, so it's really figuring out how do we get those interventions to all of our kids within that classroom. So the teacher was delivering from all levels in their classroom. The second thing that we had, and I know that, uh, Chandra talked about it and Kristi talked about it, was that first year of, of doing the Fast Bridge test for grades two through four. New test, new way of doing things, so it's just learning how to, uh, utilize that, that, uh, assessment as well as the students understanding how to use it. And then, uh, the last, uh, challenge that we've had is COVID exclusion, uh, of students. I know we had limited engagement, uh, of students at the end of the nineteen-twenty school year and then we've had, uh, students miss multiple days, uh, due to exposure and I know, just taking a look at things, I, to put things in perspective, thirty-one students had ten or more absences due to COVID and, uh, I've had three that have twenty or more. So I mean, it's having an impact on attendance as well as learning. Okay? So what, what are we doing above it? And, and I know we've talked, uh, through some of these, that, uh, we're going to continue, uh, increasing those fluency activities during our instructional week. Increasing the times, I know third grade is, has been doing it once a week, they're going to increase to three, three times a week, doing some of those fluency skills. And incorporating it into a lot of their general, um, or their, um, instruction time. Also increasing that grade level vocabulary, we're doing some of that now, but I know we're looking at next year, um, looking at increasing our, our focus with vocabulary as well. Some of the, the ways we're getting after that fluency is doing hot, cold, hot and cold reads, meaning they get a passage, they read it, that's called a cold, that's the first time reading it and they're coming back to it and reading it multiple times. A few, a few teams have done really great jobs with that. Um, third grade has an example where, uh, during some of the rotations, they have kids record themselves, uh, reading and then they give them feedback and they do it multiple times. So there's a few different ways that we're getting after that. Providing opportunities for, for those students to practice those testing skills beforehand, so I know second grade did take an opportunity. Want to talk about that, what you guys did with the, the winter testing here?
Sure, so prior to taking the mid-year, um, assessment, we had reflected as teachers about how the fall went and we were like, we need to better prepare them to take this test. So, um, the Fast Bridge has a training and resources, um, module that's included and it's really, it's supposed to be for teachers, but we found that just watching the videos were prob, would probably be beneficial to the students. So we had them watch, you know, other kids take the test so they could see and it was, hopefully, like I said, I think with the repetition and them taking it over and over, hopefully, um, they'll get used to it. Like I said, we talked about how to use the mouse correctly, um, just those kinds of things. We, I feel like they were better prepared at the mid-year to take it and hopefully in the spring when they take it, they'll be even better prepared, so. And I think we just need to, you know, even moving into next year, I know Pete and Chandra and I talked about, this year, our goal was like, oh my gosh, we need to get virtual learning going and our remote learning going and we have in-person kids. The focus wasn't necessarily like the test, you know, and so next year moving forward, I think we just really need to, as a staff, be more prepared for it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and that's, that is definitely something that we're going to be focusing on with some of our Wednesdays is making sure that we're absolutely clear as to the, what's in the test, how do we take it and how can we improve our students' just performance on the test itself, so.
And relay, are you relaying those, those things to the students so it's easier for them to understand when they, when they are timed and when they are taking those, those tests?
Yeah. With, uh, other things that we're trying to do is, is provide additional opportunities for those skills to work on, um, some of their skills and also doing some of those meeting times on the Wednesdays. I wish, I wish the students at, at the elementary could come into the building like, like the high school come in on their own, but it's, they can't drive yet, obviously, so. Um, but we're, we're taking more time to do virtual meetings with students. Uh, a lot of our special ed, uh, teachers, that's their main focus on Wednesdays, meeting with students and, and doing instruction with them, additional instruction. So really trying to incorporate that into it. And then, um, another focus that we had was, was truly narrowing our instructional focus to our priorities. So really narrowing our focus and not looking back with, as, when we get into instruction, but truly moving forward, looking at what, what are the, the grade level standards, that's our focus and trying not to, you know, look behind and try to catch kids up on stuff that they missed, so it's, so.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hopkey?
I guess I'd like to just get to the, to the beginning and say, as we do look at a benchmark with the student coming in, yeah. in that benchmark as we progress through the year, does the benchmark move also as you're, or is it, you're, so your, your benchmark is moving so that you're not only are getting caught up, but it's moving also?
That, that's exactly right, because the expectation of, of a student that's in second grade at the beginning of the year is different than at the end of the year. So we're expecting to have that growth.
Who, who sets what the benchmark should be and are we looking at other districts surrounding us?
It's, it's a, it's a nationally-normed.
So, so our numbers, some of these numbers look kind of scary.
Yeah.
But we have reasons for that.
Yeah.
And we're looking at the growth, it's, that's the important part. So that, that was what I was going to say is how do we compare, so if we're going to look at this certain group that came in at the beginning, that may be at a twenty-five percent baseline, we would say that the students in the school or district are only twenty-five percent of the rest of the country. We can say that, right?
It's, it's falling within that gender range, yeah.
So, so that was my other question, is as the test changes to the middle of the year, the expectations change also?
That's, that's right, because we're expecting that growth.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
So I, my question goes to, uh, Ms. Alton and Stafford, and that is, um, curious about your perceptions of Fast Bridge now that you've had a couple of opportunities to administer it and given the fact that we, uh, we changed tests in a year where there's a lot of other things that are going on that create challenges. And I'm particularly interested in what you're seeing in terms of Fast Bridge yielding actionable data that you're able to take back to your professional learning communities and say, hey, we're going to use this as part of our data to inform instruction.
So, um, this whole test was kind of new for the fourth grade teachers too and learning about it, so we've been kind of learning as we go with the test. But for the data that we saw with, like I said, with the fluency and fact, like, we knew that there was the formatting part of the test that kind of skewed the data. What we see in the classroom, I mean, we saw improvement with it, um, but it's, with FAST, it's really nice when you go, all the different imports that they have, they have something, um, like screening intervention and you click and there's really good resources that break it down, like what exact skills your kids need to work on. Uh, then they give you actual lessons and activities to do with those kids, like versus whole group, small group, individual. So that's been really useful, that it's all there, that we can really break it down, so during win time, you can do those different activities or during your whole group to fit it in. So it's got, it, the resource and stuff, it really breaks everything down and it's kind of all there, which has been really nice for that part.
And I would just add to what Chandra said, the one nice thing compared to STAR, which is what the assessment that we used to use, um, Fast Bridge is broken down into more sections in second grade in particular, so the data is more specific. They take an encoding, a decoding, um, a vocabulary and then they get a score for, um, and that's all part of the auto reading and then they get an A reading part, which is basic, you know, ask and answer questions about what you read. The STAR test used to be just that, so we didn't have the data about the vocabulary, the encoding and the decoding, so we love that in second grade. We have much more specific- We have much more specific data about exactly what students are struggling with. And the screening to intervention report that Chandra spoke about is wonderful. We've used it to make some slight changes, you know, to our universal instruction, as well as our small group instruction. We've implemented the grade level interventions that are suggested on there. And I think because of that, we've seen, you know, some of the growth since the beginning of the year. Now the intervention has changed to a different one, and we're just getting that rolling right now. So I think, you know, as we learn more about FastBridge and all the resources, I think it's just going to be a really useful tool.
Great, thank you.
And I want to just thank you for your good work out there and for going the extra mile. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have foreseen all the twists and turns that COVID was going to throw us a year ago when we were having this conversation about making this move. So thank you very much for hanging in there. And, you know, it's a learning curve for everybody involved, and I just appreciate your good work.
Any other questions for Mr. Hopkey or Ms. Alt or Mrs. Stafford? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the information. We appreciate it. All right. We're receiving and placing that on file, correct? Okay. All right, we're moving on to item E, discuss the RFP for audit services. Mrs. Grindell?
Just the verbal update for the board to let you guys know that we are going to start exploring this process again. As you know, two years ago, we went out. We weren't able to change at that time. Last year, we tabled it due to COVID. So at this time, I'm gathering information and inquiring if there are places locally or other places that are willing to travel to provide us with auditing services. So stay tuned.
Okay. All right, and if I can get my computer to work, we can move on. Okay. We will receive and place that on file as well. And then we're moving on to item F, discuss the 2021-2022 Middle School Yearbook Contract.
I can speak to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so, you know, this is typical for us to, when we enter into a contract as a district, we just like to bring it in front of the board to get the board's approval. There's nothing new about this contract. It's similar to what we've seen in the previous years. So we're just looking for approval to the board to move forward with it.
Okay, did everybody get to read the information given by Mrs. Bush? Okay, so do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, and then item G is the thirty-sixty-ninety-day planning. I'm assuming everybody has read information regarding the thirty-sixty-ninety-day planning for each of the buildings and the district office. Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay. All right, we are going to receive and place that on file as well. And we're moving to item H, financial update. Mrs. Grindell?
As the board knows, we are on about a month lag. So the financial update is for December. Beginning balance was three-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand nine sixty-one. We took in a total amount of receipts for the month, about one-point-two-six million, and paid two payrolls in December. Total expenditures for the month was about one-point-two-nine-seven, leaving the ending balance in the general cash account at four-hundred-and-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-six.
Okay, is there any questions? No? Okay. Do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. All righty, thank you. And item I, approval of the vouchers. Everyone has looked those over. Do you have any questions regarding the vouchers? Okay, if not, we are going to, consensus to move to the regular board meeting as part of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item three, which is convening to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen-point-eight-five, parent one, parent C, to consider, and, oh, to consider the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Me and Ben to the roll?
Yes.
Michelle Johnson?
Yes.
Kate Rooney?
Yes.
Danielle Alston?
Yes.
Deb Wilson?
Yes.
Marsha Turner?
Yes.
And Paul.
Yes.
All right. This is your advocate. Did she leave her?
Yeah, we should have.
Yep, thank you. Sorry. I knew it seemed weird. It just didn't seem right, but I was like, um. All right. Yes, I think there's just one in there. And then Marsha, I need your signature as well.
I'll do it right now before we leave, because family needs one, that's fine.
Then we can give it right.
Okay, ready, ready?
My computer to fire up here.
All right, we are reconvening into open session? Yep.
Okay. We reconvene, the board reconvened into open session at six-fifty-six PM. We're now back in the boardroom at six-fifty-eight. There was no action taken during closed session? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Time now is six-fifty-eight, and we are adjourned.